Top of meeting order, please. John, would you deliver the invitation?
Good Lord, thanks for our good chance to get here. Help the city of Jasper, help us make the right decisions as for our citizens. Help us support and be with all our firefighters, our policemen, our city workers. In your name we pray, amen.
Tony, please, the flag.
We are going to fly to the flag. To United States of America and to the Republic, to which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counting, we have with us tonight Running Troop 19001. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda and move the Brownie Troop to the beginning of the meeting so that these young ladies can go home this evening and enjoy a good evening of study before school tomorrow. We entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Mr. Mayor, I've sent an email to the UN Council about possibly tabling one of the items pending the development of a new ordinance.
Which item?
The mayor appointments.
What number is that?
Six D.
Okay, I don't see a problem with that. Would entertain a motion to postpone?
Yes, sir.
Motion to take item D off the agenda? Can a motion second discussion? Being in all favor vote by show of hands? Item D is off the agenda? I think that was an appropriate decision. With that, would entertain a motion now to approve it with that change and with the Brownies moving to the front?
So moved.
Can a motion to approve?
Second.
Can a motion second discussion? Being in all favor vote by show of hand? Except for the young lady who's running while ago with her descendant vote back there? That would be unanimous, I believe. Thank you so much. With that, I would like to, you still get to attend a lot of the meeting, young ladies. We have a few things to do prior. The next item is to read the minutes of the February 4, 2019 regular meeting and the February 8, 2019 call meeting.
Regular council meeting Monday, February 4, 2019. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order conflict at 6:00 PM. He requested Lonnie Waters give the invitation. He requested council member Anson Navy lead the pledge allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked if the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Council member Anson Navy made motion to adopt the agenda. Council member John Fowles seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City clerk Lisa Oil read the minutes of January 7, 2019 regular meeting. Council member Anson Navy made motion to adopt the minutes as changes noted. Council member John Fowles seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Ms. Oil read the minutes of the January 14, 2019 call meeting. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to adopt the minutes as changes noted. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized attorney Bill Pickett to give an update on sewer line easements on Burton Street. Mr. Pickett stated that the deeds have been executed. He stated that deeds are now recorded at the courthouse. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for council approval to accept the easement. Council member Kirk Raffield made such motion. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B, under old business, Mayor Weaver asked for an update on the closing of North Main Street from council members Tony Fountain and Kirk Raffield. Council member Fountain stated that he had talked to one member of the club and he did not get a response from any other members of the club. He also stated that since Wingsology had closed, there were no other businesses being affected by the closing of North Main. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Fountain made a motion to allow North Main to continue to be closed for the car club meetings until such time that the city receives complaints of the closing. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under old business, Mayor Weaver called on attorney Bill Pickett to present for council review the proposed block ordinance for the second reading. Mr. Pickett read the ordinance aloud. Copy of the ordinance is attached to these minutes for reference. Council member John Fowles made a motion to approve the ordinance as a second reading. Council member Kirk Raffield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized city manager General Lee to present an update on the city's purchase of property located at 125 North Main Street, the old Entaborer Bank Building. Mr. Lee stated that his suggestion was for the city to purchase the property without financing through the downtown development authority. He stated that there was money in the budget for park improvements that could be used for this purchase. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Anson Navy made a motion to purchase the property. Council members John Fowles seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under old business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Lee to give an update on stormwater drainage system at the Speed Burger on Highway 53. Mr. Lee stated that Trail and Suns have not yet given the city a quote to prepare documents in order to bid out the repair. This item will be on next month's agenda under old business. Item F, under old business, Mr. Underwood presented an application for selling alcohol, beer, wine by the drink for Dwight and Harmony Henderson, the new owners of Harmony at the Woodbridge LLC located at 44 Chambers Street. Mr. Underwood stated that the background check has been received and there is nothing that would prevent them from obtaining an alcohol license. They are requesting approval to continue the application process. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to approve the continuance of the license application. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Lee stated that the restaurant has been advertising and that they could be approved after the newspaper comes out Thursday. Mr. Lee stated that the new owners requested that council hold a call meeting to approve the license on Friday, February 8 so that they would have time to get their state license before Valentine's Day. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to hold a call council meeting Friday, February 8, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under old business, executive session. Mayor Weaver called on attorney Bill Pickett to explain why council was going into closed session to discuss John and Lane rezoning. Attorney Pickett stated that council was discussing land. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Tony Fountain made a motion to go into executive session. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting. Council member Tony Fountain made a motion to come out of executive session. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver opened the meeting. Mayor Weaver clarified that council would enter executive session to discuss possible litigation and not land. Mayor Weaver then called on Mr. Pickett to give the position of the council regarding the John and Lane rezoning. Mr. Pickett stated that on December 3, 2019, council had voted to change the zoning of John and Lane from C2 to R3 pending approval from the Appalachian Regional Commission. Mr. Pickett stated that the rezoning stands as council voted at the December regular meeting since the USDA, RC, had sent a letter to the city stating that the land rezoning did not violate the terms of the grant awarded. He stated that only the property owner could request council to rescind the zoning change. Mayor Weaver then recognized developers Brad Dilbith and David Schaus. Discussion followed with Mr. Dilbith and Mr. Schaus. Mr. Dilbith stated that he had not been notified of the public hearings and that this rezoning will affect him financially. Mr. Schaus stated that at the December council meeting, if you go back and watch the videotape, you guys, council, were too busy arguing with the mayor and vice versa to allow the public to talk. Mr. Schaus also stated that he was not, he was also not notified of the public hearing to rezon the parcels. Mayor Weaver stated, "I'm going to close this by saying that council's actions in December were specific and my recommendation of legal counsel, we will follow what council did that evening and we are aware of the issues." Item A, under new business. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lee to present to council a change to the city's alcohol ordinance since it allowed for earlier sales by the drink on Sunday and to also change the food to drink ratio to match state law. Mayor Weaver appointed council member Anson Navy to work with the city manager on the changes. Item B, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lee and Donna Eckhart with the Carriage House Restaurant to ask for a special events license under Section 10, Act 26 of the City's Code ordinances. The section allows for the mayor authorize the license but the council must set a fee. Ms. Eckhart asked for the special events license for Valentine's Day. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to accept a $25. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lee to discuss yard signs. Mr. Lee stated that the city was going to start enforcing the yard sign ordinance and will be picking up these illegal signs. Item D, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lee to present council a possible purchase of an electronic filing system for the building department. Mayor Weaver appointed council member Kirk Raffield to look at these systems and have a report for council at next month's regular meeting. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Hall to present to council quotes on the purchase of a sewer pump located at the Burt Mountain, Burt Mountain Road lift station, which was included in the 2019 budget. Mr. Hall stated that he had received two quotes, James Electric 14,00845 and Offshore Electric, Inc. Incorporated at 15,017. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member John Fowles made a motion to accept the local James Electric for 14,00845. Council member Kirk Raffield seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item F, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Hall to ask council's approval for additional pipe for the Toppin Rock project. He stated that the same country the city bought from the prior year, Core Main, had stated that they would offer the same price per foot at $3.80. He stated that $50,000 is in the budget for 2019. Total cost of this pipe to continue the Ivy Green Lane would be $7,660. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to approve the purchase of 2,000 feet of pipe for a cost of $7,660. Council member John Fowles seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item G, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized David Hall to present to council revised contract with Eagle Point Land Center for the purpose of treating the lands of leachate. Mr. Hall stated that the contract revision was due to higher concentrations of leachate in the process. Mr. Hall read the contract. Mayor Weaver stated that in the future, the city should look at the garbage contract with the city as well. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to approve the contract. Council member Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item H, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized General Lee to present to council an agreement with Pickens County Chamber of Commerce for the use of the city collecting hotel motel types to use for tourism purposes. Mr. Lee read the contract. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to approve the agreement. Council member John Fowles seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item I, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized General Lee to present to council a joint resolution to claim the city in Pickens County regarding the Pickens County Veterans' Memorial Park. Mr. Lee stated that the purpose of the resolution was to preserve the land that lies south of Stegall Drive and west of the current location of the existing pavement of the parking lot of the memorial for the purpose of honoring the veterans of Pickens County. Mr. Lee read the resolution. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member John Fowles made a motion to approve the agreement. Council member Kirk Raffield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Finance director Lisa Oil gave a financial report for the month of January 2019. Lonnie Waters gave a report of Rosen Street. Chief Director gave a report of police activities for the month of January 2019. Chief Steve Robber gave a report of fire activities for the month of January 2019. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver adjourned the meeting. Council's schedule to convene next is the call meeting to be held February 8, 2019.
Entertained a motion?
The motion was accepted.
Motion to approve is read. Motion to second discussion. Being in all favor vote by show of hand? Unanimous, thank you, council. Next one is February 8, 2019 call meeting.
Call council meeting Friday, February 8, 2019. Mayor Weaver asked if the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Council member Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the agenda. Council member John Fowles seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sunny Andrew Falyne, the zoning director, to present an alcohol license application to council for approval. He informed council that Dwight and Harmony Henderson, the new owners of Harmony at the Woodbridge LLC located at 44 Chambers Street, had completed the application process and the required advertising had been met and the fingerprint results had been determined prohibiting them from obtaining alcohol license. The owner is now requesting that the application for license to sell alcohol, beer, wine by the drink be approved. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to approve the license. Council member Sunny Carter seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated to note, "Council member Anson Navy was not attending." Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Council member Kirk Raffield made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council's schedule to convene next is the public hearing to be held on February 26, 2019.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion, accept the minutes of this.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Being in all favor vote by show of hand? Next item is, we want to go straight to new business, which we won't recognize necessarily as new business, but recognizing Brownie Troop 19001. Kirk, I'll recognize you to identify the Brownie Troop and their purpose.
Thanks, sir. This evening, we are lucky and fortunate enough to have a Brownie Troop with us. The city of Jasper, as everyone's aware, is, we value our water and we value recycling. So these young ladies are here to educate us a little bit tonight and let us know exactly why that's important to us here in Jasper. So y'all feel free to come on forward. Perfect. Miss Ashley, I'll turn it over to you. This is Ashley. She's one of the leaders of the Troop and, yeah.
Hello, we are Troop 19001. This year, we have been working on a, what is called a journey, which is something that we've been working on for the majority of the year over reusing, recycling and conserving different things. So the girls would like to share some of the things that they have learned to help spread the word. So I will let Sophia start it.
I think you should use cloth fans because turtles and plastic bags are food.
You should turn off your faucet when you're done washing your hands, brushing your teeth and washing your face. It is conserving water when you don't leave the faucet on.
To save water, you can take a bucket and leave it outside. And when it rains, you can use that water to wash your hands or to do other things.
Don't flush anything but toilet paper down the toilet.
You can use water more than once. They are reusable because they do not break easy. They are recyclable because they are paper bags.
Turn off the lights when you leave a room. Don't keep the lights on so you can save energy.
We have learned to save water by not wasting it.
Use metal straws and not plastic straws so they don't end up in the ocean and hurting the animals that live in the sea.
I learned to recycle glass, plastic and metal. It is important to separate them into different bags.
You can save water to, to get water from the rain and use it for plants.
So these are some different ways that we have learned this year and the girls have put a lot into learning, to doing all of this. Thank you very much for letting us come and talk to you about some of our things.
Fantastic. Thank you. Let me draw them individually and their names, please.
Oh, girls.
And I want the council to take a picture with them.
Okay. All right. Can y'all tell, I want you to each tell me your first and last name and which elementary school you go to.
Sophia Cower and I go to Harmony Elementary School.
Isabella Hutchberry, I go to Hill City Elementary.
Aunty Gayhee, I go to Hill City Elementary.
I am Gayhee, I go to Hill City Elementary.
Alon Lawford, Harmony Elementary.
I am Jessica Melton and I go to Tate Elementary.
I'm Kirsten Karina and I go to Tate Elementary.
I'm Crystal Hallfield and I go to Jugg, Harmony Elementary.
I'm already taking the name.
All right, ladies, what do y'all tell them for letting us come?
You're so welcome. And I want to pick out, who was it that interrupted me a while ago when we were so concerned? Holy word, devil.
Thank you, ladies.
Recognize Kirk.
City council, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that this council encourage all those in our community to continue the water conservation and recycling to the best of their ability.
You want a second on that? Let's have a motion, let's take a second. Can a motion is second? Discussion? Being in all favor vote by show of hand? Think it's unanimous? And David Hall, I guess you appreciate all of this, do you not?
Hundred percent.
Matter of fact, we may use that motion as part of our plan to get a permit. Okay, under old business, uh... Update of school and water upgrade at Highway 53 and John Street, Speed Burger, better than known as, Jim, Brandon.
Thank you for letting me follow that, Mr. Mayor. Really fair. At our Thursday night work session, I mentioned to council I had not received a bid from Trail and Associates Engineering Group that was putting the work together. I received it at 2:00 this afternoon. Asked the council to give me a little bit of time to spend working on that and we can get a plan again reported at the next meeting.
No action?
No action.
Next item, update on alcohol amendment. Jim, Ann?
As we discussed Thursday night, we have looked at the ability or had the method of changing the time for Sunday sales. That will take a vote of council to ask for a election of the city to approve that. Next opportunity to do that will be November. So that would have to be to the Board of Elections sometime midsummer. Don't have a date, but we will get it together and have council prepared to vote on a motion to ask them to include it on the ballot. At the same time, we are trying to get the information together on percent of alcohol sales, food sales required by restaurants, and we will give a recommendation to council in the near future. Ann and I will get together before the next meeting, have something prepared for that.
Okay. So there's no action necessary except that action to move forward or proceed? And I noticed that your name's still on this, or are you not turning over the reins to Brandon? I thought that was going to be the discussion.
Transitioning city manager into city manager. So as we discussed last Thursday, there's going to be a few items overlapping. So by the next work session and the meeting, I'll get the...
That's just confusing because Jim kept mentioning, I thought we were going to, tonight we're going to put your name on the...
That's correct.
... recognize you as our city manager.
Well, as of February 18th, I was the city manager. I think procedurally, mayor and council needs to, I guess, authorize a few housekeeping measures such as the resolution adding to signing and whatnot. And the new business, you'll notice, item E, signature card change will be...
Right, yeah, that's why I was getting that, so I thought it might be redundant that Brandon would be handling these issues. Okay, with that being said, no action necessary. Next item, update on electronic filing, building permits, drawings and plans. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have reached out to the National Patrol Association for information and they sent some my way. I'm doing some follow-up on that and I'm waiting for more information to flow back to them.
Okay, so no action necessary?
No, sir.
Okay, remain on old business.
Yes.
We removed item D. We moved forward with that, but I didn't ask for a good explanation a while ago because the young ladies were here and I didn't really want to get into a discussion, but explain to the council why we're not discussing it tonight because it was put on by the two managers.
Well, during the organizational meeting in January, we all remember that the council refused or did not approve three of the reappointments. During that course of that discussion, Mr. Pickett had pointed out that those appointments carry over if no one is in that position. And indeed, as I researched the ordinances of Jasper as well as the charter, I did find that for both the Jasper Housing Authority and for the Zoning Appeals Board, indeed, we have ordinances that establish those committees and how they operate. And in the case of the Jasper Housing Authority, I believe state law allows that person to carry over. In the case of the zoning and planning board and commission, we've not really been able to lay our hands on the ordinances that establish that committee and/or that board or that commission. And so I thought it would be more pertinent if we are going to move forward with that particular appointment that we get those ordinances in place or reorganized and then move forward, so.
With that, and I thought that was attached to also why I was so quick to respond to that, I thought that tied into the item on the agenda dealing with first reading of zoning commission ordinance. And we've not discussed that very much, so already be reading ordinance. So I thought that was part of it and that's why I was so hesitant, so quickly to respond to your request. But since we did vote on it and it is off the agenda, I do have concerns with that and we'll discuss that in the near future. Next item, item D, update grandview gateway to the mountains development. Consider establishing committee to review plans. Brandon does this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. As discussed in the Thursday meeting, we have received some site plans in terms of this particular development proposed out on the PUD development out at 108 and 515. The mayor and I had spoken and I think from the staff perspective, we wanted to tap into some of council and mayor's knowledge in terms of reviewing these plans. As you will recall, it was zoning of the PUD for, I believe, active adult single family units. And so the site plans did not have some of the information that we had kind of wanted to see reflected. And so, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to see about establishing a committee of staff. You wanted to council members to kind of look over those, okay?
Do you have any recommendation on who you want to be on the committee?
Ideally, my past experiences have been with the chief elected official, mayor, and the appointed member of the council that perhaps has some experience dealing with developments. Perhaps councilman Fowles with some knowledge and stuff.
Except Mr. Fowles would be willing to follow.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we're going to basically table this, move forward, he'll notify the developers that were still under advisement.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, that's a, yes. Forgive me, Mike, believing gentleman.
Assistant, Kate Spangis, that's what it's called.
I apologize, there was a gentleman that I believed...
Has anyone notified Mike to come in to be...
He said he would, yes, ma'am.
We pay him some fee to come in, I'm going to discuss that with him, so it should not be an issue and should not burden the budget.
Apologies.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Item A has already been taken care of in the new business. Item B, consider change name of Stegall Drive to Veterans Memorial Boulevard, which lists...
Ray, we booked y'all's name.
Thank you, Mayor.
We don't want to leave Ray out, so...
No, I appreciate that.
Have a seat, yeah. Makes him come.
Ray's our senior vice president and our general manager for Veterans Memorial Park. And we have a presentation, I'm going to run the presentation while he speaks.
Okay. Okay, good. Do you mind if I stand up?
You can do what you want.
Thank you very much. I've been sitting. I get to sit a lot, huh? Prefer standing. So anyway, I appreciate very much for all of you to take time to hear us out here and about the name change. And, but first of all, I'd like to thank this council, the mayor, for all the support we've had since day one when we started this project. And we've had a lot of support and we, the agreement that we needed is all done and put to bed and I, we have noticed, or we have noticed that most if not all of the members of the council, including the mayor, has either themselves or one of the family members a brick, has a brick of honor at the Veterans Memorial. And that in itself shows a lot of support. So we appreciate that. And was, there was a third thing. I don't remember. Anyway.
If you're aware of...
Go back to...
There's 717 bricks standing there right now. There's plan for future growth and we've got more than, we're actually expanding those sections. Section A and I, we're about to expand them, so.
So, matter of fact, I got to talk quickly. One of the people who helped us tremendously, when we came up with the idea of the bricks of honor, he said, "You'd be lucky if you sell 75." I said, "Well, my goal's 1,000." And we haven't got there yet, but we will. I don't have any doubt about that. It seems like every time we get a little publicity, we've given more orders for bricks, so hopefully...
Look at the cameras.
Look at the cameras.
Got that? So anyhow, move on. This is, of course, phase one. This is phase one, and it's just absolutely more beautiful than our original design. I mean, it's just gorgeous, and every time I go by there, I got to tell you, I see somebody walking around, either looking for bricks or for somebody, or, and I always stop and go over even in the rain, and if they're there, I stop because I'm really proud of what the community has, and I mean, the entire community has helped build this thing. And it's just gorgeous, and that's phase one, and that's just the beginning. And I'm going to share a little bit about the phase two in the future. But the next thing is, the next thing is, anyway, just the signs, okay? We approached DOT, oh, God, I don't remember when I made the phone call, but anyway, a long time ago, and, oh, there we go. Those signs are up. We have signs up at, from, let's see, going eastbound, northbound, southbound, pointing down 53 to, at 515 and 53, pointing down in this way to the Veterans Park, Memorial Park. And there's signs across the street, right at Mary and Maple Street, I believe?
Well, in the middle of the park.
Okay, in the middle of the park, okay. So pointing at the park. And so, so they just happened to finally get up a few days ago, I guess.
Correct.
So anyway, that's done. So the next slide, we didn't know we were going to add those things up when we put these slides together, so. Anyway, this is phase two. As you recall, back at the retaining wall, you've all been down there, I'm sure, to see that beautiful stone wall back behind it, the retaining wall. Most of that was donated. Most of that was donated by Benny, I can't remember his name. Yes, thank you. And he donated most of them, and then we purchased the rest of them to finish it out. And so we're, what our plan is, is to do the grading all the way down to as far as we can go. And I know there's maybe some issues with road changes in 53, I don't know. There is, there is. And so we extend the retaining wall all the way down, and then in the center of the retaining wall, as you go down towards 53 from the existing memorial, will be, in the center of that, will be a plaque with all of the KIA's killed in action from just Pickens County. Now, I know we have that also right here at the county courthouse. And by the way, it wasn't until Vietnam Day a couple of years ago that I found out for the first time that we had the monuments there. What happens is that visitors come in and see it, but I wonder how many people actually know it exists there. I didn't know of them. Okay, so then one of the thing, another thing we're considering is a bell tower, a pretty large bell tower there in the center. And then, and then on the end, some military equipment, which would be either a tank or a helicopter, airplane, or, or something. Anyway, whatever. We don't know where we can get from the government. So, and by the way, we don't own it, the city won't own it, the DOT, partner pencil will just loan it to you. It doesn't have any engine in it, I don't know. So, Mr. Mayor, you can't drive that down the street, you know, I'm sorry. So anyway, we would like, at the change of, we would like to have a sign there up, if you can't see it, it says Pickens County Chamber of Commerce right now, and we would like a sign up there naming the street Veterans Memorial Boulevard. That's the reason we're here tonight. We've had all the support in the world we could expect from the city and the community and the council, and we just hope you'll honor our request and rename. By the way, we have met with the, both the Chamber of Commerce and the Senior Center, which are the two buildings on that street, and, but it'd be from Mary Street to Maple Street, and just that section would be Veterans Memorial.
You also had a full range there as well, did you talk to them, the change?
I, that, I discussed that with...
The chamber, which is in the building.
Amberly, I'm sorry, Amberly. The name escaped me for a moment, but I discussed that with Amberly, and she said, "Don't worry about it, she would take care of it."
Okay, that's, a lot of addresses being changed.
And we also explained to each one of them, if there was a cost that we needed to absorb, we'd take care of it.
So this will be the area inside the park itself?
Yes, sir.
Just from Mary, just from Mary down over to Maple.
That is correct.
That's correct.
So you still have Seagull Drive.
And we have letters signed by each, by the president and by Amberly and by, which we have copies for each of you.
We have copies in back.
We also have each of those slides.
Who's the representative of the senior center? Would that be the commissioner?
We spoke to...
You can.
I don't remember who that was. Can you believe... Kimberly Bolt is who was...
Okay.
I spoke to her personally.
So they're, they do not have a problem changing?
They think it's a great idea.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion.
How much motion do we change?
The name of Stegall Drive to Veterans Memorial Boulevard from Mary Street to Maple Street.
Property which is inside the park. Got a motion, is that a favor to add that to that town?
Yes.
Okay. Got who's the second? John? Got a motion, second, discussion. Any discussion? Being none off everybody's show hand? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I tell you, did your homework before you got here, I was worried when you talked to me when you were doing. That's usually a lot of homework to be changed.
We also got 911 or Communication Center to verify if there was no other questions concerning the street name.
So what you want to have, you're going to have a police chase going down Stegall, and when they get to intersection of Mary and now Memorial Drive...
Veterans Memorial.
Veterans Memorial Drive.
Boulevard.
They'll probably be able to get away because they won't know how to tell them where to go.
Sure. Had the documents signed.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you too. Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Same thing with documents signed. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John, for your hard work.
Thank you. Who should we follow up with potential logistics one sign might be up, or is anything that we could do with that with city manager?
City manager.
Well, you got to change, well, you got to change the motion, people probably get angry.
Sir, oh, yes.
Well, we'll let you get on with the important business of state, right?
Thank you, Ray.
Good seeing you, Ray.
Good seeing you all. And by the way, one of your council members is a member of the board, the Veterans Memorial Park Board member. I don't tell you who it was, but you all...
Okay, I don't see council email issues, considering, consider authorize the city manager to resolve. What's this, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, there had been some questions raised about, a couple elected in terms of receiving emails, I believe, in terms of obtaining emails from persons that they had sent out. There was an issue as to whether or not it was coming through the server. So what I'd like to do with mayor and council's blessing, so to speak, is to reach out to BTC, who I believe is our provider, and to personally meet with them. I've not had the pleasure in the last two weeks, so this would be a great opportunity to introduce myself as city manager to informally, as well as looking into any resolution to ensure that any emails that the mayor and board receives from constituents or otherwise are properly received, and just any sort of technological question that I may have in terms of operationals.
Slight bit of day-to-day operation to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item, item D, alcoholized request for a continuing Smokin' Mo's Barbecue LLC. Mr. Underwood?
Who is this? I'm afraid not.
Now, let's do it.
Mr. Mayor, council, I need to ask for a continuance or Smokin' Joe's Barbecue. We do not have their fingerprints back yet, I would let you know that tonight, but...
What is their address?
61 Main.
Well, where's their last tag?
61 Main.
Okay, the address 61 Main, not 61 Main, the restaurant, it's 61...
61 Main, the restaurant.
Only known as Wings Olive.
Yes.
Crow's Nest.
Crow's Nest.
Two sis, three sisters.
Three sisters and whatever.
Way to shoot score.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have any action this evening.
No.
So we'll be ready next month, I guess. Okay? Well, we'll be on the, just as old business.
Well, we'll be here presenting.
Thank you, sir. Item E, thanks signature change, remove Jim Looney and add Brandon Douglas. Jim?
Part of the transition within, will include changing the name on signature cards. I'm asking for a motion to add Brandon D. Douglas and remove Jim Looney from signature approval for the city of Jasper.
Motion?
Motion, remove Jim Looney and put Brandon Douglas on...
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion. Being none off everybody's show hand? Thank you, Jim. Item B, sewer system expansion, February 26, 2019, public hearing minutes read into this meeting. Ms. Ho and Mr. Brandon Douglas. Who's going to read? The council, we had the workshop, most of you were not there, some of you might have got to watch it on the, No Pickens, might have read the paper, but this needs to be in the minutes for, this is going to be a long drawn-out process making this loan, and it needs to be part of the record.
Mr. Mayor and council, if Ms. Ho is available, I'd like for her to read, so I don't have to listen to my ugly voice.
Please.
Public hearing Tuesday, February 26, 2019. Mayor Weaver opened the public hearing promptly at 10:00 a.m. Mayor Weaver welcomed the press, Pickens County progress, as well as NoPickens.com. He also recognized city manager Brandon Douglas. He then recognized Mr. Chris Pogey, who is current senior engineer, present the sewer system improvements to be funded by Georgia's Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Mr. Pogey stated that this meeting is being conducted to gather public input regarding the expansion of a wastewater treatment plant to 1.56 million gallons per day. Mr. Pogey stated that this meeting, along with last public hearing to support environmental information document, is being held in order to gather any comments from the public that might be included in the final report to the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Mr. Pogey stated that since the last public hearing held in July of 17, that has been a change in the plan of the wastewater treatment plant to discharge into Long Swamp Creek rather than Pole Cap Branch. He stated this change would result in a less restrictive permit and would alleviate the plant having to do temperature control and some of the other really stringent nutrient control of the discharge. He stated that his firm has changed all the reports to reflect the changes. He stated that in June of 2018, his firm sent a revised anti-degradation review as well as a revised design development report to the EPD. He stated that in November of 2018, his firm sent a revised environmental planning document, which is hand-in-hand with the environmental information document. He said the city council had authorized his firm to prepare these reports, not only to support the permitting process with the state of Georgia, but also to support the environmental review process with GFA, one of the funding agencies. He stated that as of December of 2018, all updated documents required for the funding have been submitted, and in January of 2019, this meeting was scheduled in order to finalize the review process requiring public input. He stated that as soon as the Environmental Protection Division issued a no significant impact report, shortly thereafter, the city would begin receiving long documents from GFA and USCA. Mr. Pogey stated that the discharge into Long Swamp Creek was a win-win for the city as water coming into the creek downstream from the city's intake is a water source that increased the flow to the creek and could help the city's withdrawal permit. He stated that the total cost of the expansion was estimated at 7.66 million dollars. Mayor Weaver opened the floor, comments and questions regarding the wastewater treatment plant. Dan Pule, Pickens Progress, asked a question regarding leach, leach aid. Mr. Pogey explained how it is treated by chlorination, dechlorination. Mr. Pogey said there would be no problem in treating, in treated leach aid going back into Long Swamp Creek. Mr. Pule asked how would the plant look after the expansion, would it be significantly larger, and would it require additional property? Mr. Pogey stated that the wastewater treatment plant would be on the same footprint as it is currently. He stated when the plant was built in 1982, this expansion was planned for at that time by Mr. Ben Turenci. Mr. Pule asked how many more homes, businesses could be added to the system. Mr. Pogey stated that literally the system would be double the capacity of the current system. Mayor Weaver stated that currently the plant was operating at 80% capacity. Mayor Weaver stated that this increase would prevent the city to continue to grow commercially as well as residentially. Mayor Weaver stated that if not for this increase in capacity, the city would be looking at having to raise the rates on existing customers. He stated that the city was ready to pull the trigger on this increase in 2006, 2007, but stopped due to the downturn in the economy. He also commented that there would be opposition on the release of the discharge into Long Swamp Creek. He stated that without the change to discharge into Long Swamp, the city would not be able to meet most of the conditions of the EPD. He stated that it needs to be understood that this discharge would have a positive effect on the creek, especially during drought conditions. He also stated that in the future, the city would need more public hearings. He wanted to let it be known to the residents that if the city does not change the discharge into Long Swamp Creek and expand its wastewater treatment plant in order to increase the discharge permit, the city would be facing a moratorium from the Environmental Protection Division. Mayor Weaver stated that a moratorium would be the ultimate stopping the commercial and residential growth in Jasper. Mayor Weaver thanked Mr. Pogey and the press pertaining, and being no other questions or comments, Mayor Weaver returned the public, the public hearing. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular meeting, to be held March 4, 2019.
Intend a motion to enter these minutes as part of the public record, as part of this meeting. Got a motion?
Second.
Motion's second, discussion. Being none off everybody's show hand? She knows. Thank you, guys. Item G, fire engine number two repair, Chief Row... And Brandon.
Good evening, mayor. Couple weeks ago during a routine check, we found water low in the radiator. Not that uncommon, we refilled as always, a couple days later it blew again. We flushed the entire cooling system, the engine, couple days later it was still low. At that point, I sent the truck to Peterbilt in Atlanta, which is in Kempso. They did a diagnostic and determined they thought it was a head gasket blown. They called back the next day and they thought it was a cracked head. And they called back the next day and thought it was a cracked block. Now we're back to a cracked, I'm sorry, blown head gasket. I've included, I think you've already got the quotes that I got from Peterbilt. Worst-case scenario, if the block was cracked, we're looking at 28,000, I believe it is, 28,63105, and that's if the block is cracked and it has to be rebuilt. Peterbilt thinks it's a head gasket, it's a $7,400 problem. 74... Seventy-four, thirty-eight, forty-nine. I think we need to approve maybe thirty thousand even in case they call me back tomorrow and say, yes, it is a block. And hope for a seventy-five hundred dollar fix.
You really say I'd like to ask that you approve.
I would, I would love to ask. It would be approved to confirm that if necessary.
Chief, this is one of our trucks that we need.
Yes, it's a first-out truck. Truck that was originally designed to run primarily outside the city limits. Currently, it runs every day. It's like the newest truck. So yes, it is a first-out.
I thought it's primarily in the old days to run inside the city.
It is.
Then we transferred it out with the new truck.
It is, but it was designed to be the truck that goes out. We have to go up the county. Carry more water, have more hoes, those sort of things. It is a city truck, though, that actually runs in the city every day. But it is designed to supplement the county more than the new truck.
I understand from the meeting the other night that you weren't at, but we are now with the ninety-eight model.
Yes.
The one that we first drove, we thought we had something really special.
The ninety-eight model that was replaced by the new truck that we just bought has now had to step back up.
How many miles does that have on it?
The ninety-eight model? I couldn't tell you, to be honest, because the speedometer stopped working on it about ten years ago.
So the truck we're talking about was our primary truck until we got this new one.
Yes, the one that was, not the one that's in the shop now. The one that, the new one replaced. It's had to step back up and been a first-out truck.
And engine two, I'm looking at yours, it's got thirty-nine thousand miles on it.
Engine two, it's got thirty-nine thousand road miles on it. When a fire truck's in pump, the engine's turning, so the speedometer turns to keep an actual account of mileage and things. The thirty-nine thousand road miles on it is equivalent to two hundred thousand miles been driven. Because you take into account, it sits for eight hours on the fire and pumps the speedometer turning the whole time because it's engine wear, even though it's not in gear and driving. So it's actually a little less. I'd have to do the numbers again. It's a little less than two hundred thousand miles on the engine.
There's not an hour meter on it?
Yes, there is an hour meter. It's over four thousand hours.
And how long, how long do they normally last? Miles or hours, however you want?
As busy as we are now, we can get, we could probably get fifteen years out of a truck. This one's at sixteen, so... But barring the engine being blown, we've never had a whole lot of trouble out of it either. It's got a C-12 Caterpillar in it, which Peterbilt tells me is notorious for head gasket issues.
But isn't the first time?
When the truck was brand-new, we got a recall on it back in two thousand and thirty. We got a recall on it, and Peterbilt fixed that Caterpillar. They fixed the head gasket on it before it blew. When it was brand-new, that was a recall issue. So now it's one blown. The shop woman tells me that's a common problem with C-12 Caterpillar.
Do you know if that did a complete rebuild from the twenty-eight, six thirty-one, what timeframe would we be looking at? Do you have an estimate?
Probably at least two weeks. At least, because it has to be an in-frame rebuild, because the way a fire truck's built, the cab won't come out of the way. So the motor has to be rebuilt in the frame. It's called an in-frame rebuild. With a classic open road tractor, the cab just comes off. No matter how much you worry, with a fire truck that clips up, it doesn't come off.
And I think we talked about the other night, a lot of that was labor, right?
A big portion of that is labor, and a lot of it's because it's a fire truck. It was broken down here, the labor. Labor of that twenty-eight, six thirty-one, if it were to come to that, over ten grand of that labor.
Right.
Any questions? Like where the money's coming from? It's always a question I've heard come in the past.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna ask it, yeah.
I have, um...
Because I'm just, I'm thankful we have a fire truck in place that the city's...
I am.
Can get fire foot out now that we have this issue especially, so... And we did talk a little bit about the budget as to where we were getting the money.
As far as budget concerns, I have a couple of projects that are in my two thousand and nineteen budget that we can obviously just scrap and transfer that money to repairs.
Correct.
And if it's only seventy-five hundred dollars, then it's golden as far as that goes.
Explain, explain here.
Well, and that's what I, that's what I was gonna get.
Items. Go ahead, tell them.
For our next, item here is a legal purchase from the fire department.
Sorry, what was that?
That's what I was gonna get. You said you had some projects that if it come to the twenty-eighth thousand, you might have to put out.
That's not one of the projects, no. I've got a fifteen thousand driveway, fifteen thousand dollar driveway repair that can obviously be pushed off to next year. Fifteen thousand dollar rock work thing to go along with the repainting that we did. Obviously, I can push that off.
How much was that?
Eighteen thousand.
Total rock work?
Those two together were thirty thousand dollars.
So fifteen thousand worth of work, the rock, fifteen thousand worth of painting?
Through parking lot, yes.
Thirty thousand right there.
I have the rock project on my capital. Did you bank it for us?
Yes, ma'am, I saw it in my budget.
It's my understanding that it's under side improvement. There's fifteen thousand under side improvement on my budget, and then there's fifteen thousand in capital outlay that specifies driveway.
Yeah, I reviewed that from our last work session, just to verify that they were in there. I had the same question. They are both in there, both for fifteen thousand.
So we could take that thirty thousand and allow to get the truck fixed, and then if we have anything, and it's only seventy-five hundred dollars?
Right. If it turns out seventy-five pieces, then I've got other projects.
Then we can revisit the project.
Those two projects can be pushed back to twenty-twenty with no problem.
Do you have any other... Something else go wrong? You have any other wiggle?
I have a maintenance and repairs budget that is hopefully high enough to cover any other problems.
Okay, I mean, it's something early for them.
Well, I can give you thirty thousand dollars.
I have a maintenance and repairs budget that can stand.
And your automobile won't be here until late of the year, so we had a bigger problem. That's probably gonna spend probably just three, four thousand this year on this vehicle, because it's gonna be fine.
I'm fine.
You're looking at a September, September delivery on that.
So you're a lot of months this year, so you could get, if you don't have anything else go bad.
Right.
Sure, the first time they'll look yet. They will look, mature the blocks.
Yes, as soon as the head comes off, they will confirm with me right then, yes, it is just a gasket, or no. And if it winds up being a cracked head, that seventy-five hundred could go to twelve, fourteen thousand in hurry too. And at that point, I need for you guys to decide. Do you want me to spend twelve thousand dollars and just replace the head, or do you want to rebuild the motor?
What's the new engine cost?
Uh, thirty, I believe it was thirty-five thousand.
You're really close to a new engine.
Mm-hmm.
So we can make that decision if it's blocked.
Right, yeah.
Intend a motion to transfer potential of fifteen thousand for the rock and fifteen thousand for the pavement or concrete?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve up to thirty thousand dollars for the repairs of this vehicle.
Coming from the existing budget?
Yes, those two monies.
Okay. Second. A motion and a second, and a second. Any discussion? Ben, I'll favor show of hand. Unanimous? Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
You're still in hot seat. Nine-one-one interface purchase, Steve Roper.
Okay. This project actually started last year. Counties went through several CAD updates, CAD being computer-aided dispatch. Their system is capable of a lot of things now that it didn't used to be. The project, as a matter of fact, I purchased iPads for the vehicles last year in anticipation of this project coming. Later in the year, the project stalled, lost speed, and as a budget preparation time for two thousand and nineteen, nobody could give me any numbers to work off of. So therefore, I didn't budget for it. Late December, the project came back online. I found out that the fire department's part, if we wanted it to take place, was fifteen thousand and twenty-seven dollars from the Caliber Company and three thousand dollars from the state of Georgia from Image Trend. And those numbers are to build a computer-aided dispatch interface.
That's fifteen plus three thousand?
Plus three thousand.
So eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand and one hundred and twenty dollars, I think it is. We made some changes. I've got the numbers here. Fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, and three thousand. Now, what this, what this interface does currently, when nine-one-one dispatches us that, we get the audio message, obviously. Name, date, situation, whatever, address. Then when the call's over, we get a fax CAD sheet with the generic information on it. I was gonna bring one tonight and didn't, I'm sorry. I apologize. We get a fax CAD sheet, computer-aided dispatch, with the information on it. The interface will allow all of the information that nine-one-one has taken in, not just verbally on the phone, but everything that's coming in. Everything they type into the system dumps instantly into those iPads that I wanted to purchase. So when the guys get the truck, they're still getting the automated, or the audio message. When they get the truck, they're trying to cut, all this information is gonna pull up on the iPad. With lots of other perks and whatnot, you've got the call history. You have a lieutenant on the truck, he can push a button and see if we've been to that address before. What it's for, what the nature of the call was. And we have places that we do go all the time. You've got all this, this information, anything that's entered in streams real-time to the iPad. You don't have to wait for the dispatcher to call you on the radio. All this is designed to try and cut radio traffic down. Radio's very busy. You've got dispatcher dealing with us, county fires, JPD, Pickings Esso. So the interface would eliminate all of that. The Image Trend is the state reporting program. That's what ninety percent of the fire departments in the state of Georgia use. This Image Trend is maintained with the state of Georgia. The three thousand dollars allows an interface between Image Trend and Caliber, the company that's built, that's building the interface. So when the call's done, the lieutenant on the way back hits the button that says, "Build incident report from CAD." And all this information that's been dumped into the iPad is then dumped straight into the Image Trend system from the state of Georgia. Lieutenant types in his narrative, it's saved, and we're done. The state's got all their information, the feds get their information that we have to report because we got a federal grant several years ago. We have to report what's inverse, national priority, the recording system. All of that's taken care of automatically. The problem I have is that dollar amount has not been budgeted for. I spoke with the City Manager around the first of the year about the project. We talked for a little while, and he said he thought it was important. I thought it was important. He gave me the go-ahead to proceed with the project. And that's where I'm at right now.
Are you, are you talking about eighteen thousand dollars not funded before?
Right. That is, that is not in my budget currently.
It was started and then postponed.
It was.
Basically.
The whole, the whole project is broad.
Yeah.
County Fire is going through the same thing I'm doing, they're building interfaces. The Sheriff's Department, I think, may already be up and running. They're doing reports in their cars and all that stuff. The school system, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the school system has something to do with it, but I don't have the details on that, no.
Chief, what I'm here, correct me if I'm wrong, this not only is going to give us our statistics to the feds, the state, our local level to support the grants, but it will also save lives with the call history.
Uh, yes.
And if we know where we've been before, that could potentially be life-saving information that your guys would otherwise maybe not have.
It's information that they don't have access to now because, number one, the dispatcher doesn't have time. She doesn't have time to pull up and say, yes, you've been there before for heart attack calls in the past, or you've been there before for natural gas emergency. They don't have time to give us any of that information. All of that will be live fed directly to the iPad.
That's not what we're gonna get at here. It's already bought. What we're gonna do now is recognize that we spent eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars that we did not budget for, and we were not told in January that we had this problem until tonight.
Correct.
So I just want to clarify that.
Okay, so what we need to do is just figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Exactly.
It's done.
Have you figured it out?
No, it's not in his budget. It's not in...
No, it is not budgeted for. I didn't, when I was preparing my budget for twenty nineteen, I didn't have any number. The project had stalled, and I couldn't get a number from anybody.
Would it be appropriate, go ahead, Ann?
Well, I mean, I know things come up every year that we don't have in the budget, so we just gotta figure out what we gotta do with it. You know, and how we gotta do it.
Going back, going back to the fire truck repair. Best case scenario, we come out with seven thousand dollars. We put, we allocated thirty thousand dollars. Worst case scenario, am I correct?
Yes.
Then we could take it up.
Could we, if we come out lucky enough with the seven thousand dollars on the fire truck repair, could we use the remaining of that for this?
Going to have to. But that would've been a great thing if the engine's gone bad. We had the money for the three repairs, but all of a sudden, the engine goes bad. But never in March or February, we have an engine go bad in a fire truck.
First time they hit the city.
So we're in a dilemma because this one's going really out of budget come into the year. It's gonna be a pretty embarrassing thing trying to explain how we're upside down on the fire truck. So deal with it in March.
Well, no.
What do we do, what do we do if we have to spend the whole thirty thousand dollars on the truck?
Do you, would it have to make a motion broad enough to where we use the remaining budget out of that thirty, if there is any? If not, approve the City Manager to fund the funds?
Well, I think, I think we need to give a stern reprimand that we did not know that we had a third, approval for an eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-dollar item before this council. And that reprimand needs to come to the... I was about to give it to you. But that being said... My thought was it was in the budget, and I'm finding out now it's not. That's, that's on, that's on Jim Looney. But with that being said, evidently you've already spent the money in the county. Have we written a check? Eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars?
Yeah, you see that five thousand over checklist? No, actually, it was in January.
That, we're going to have to figure out. There's gonna be some pavilion somewhere that's gotta go. And we're way over, I think we've always loaded about twenty-five percent, thereabouts, for the fire department. Are you gonna, are we hitting way past that?
I believe so.
At our present, no. So I say we go ahead and bless the work that they did, but we need to know that information before we get to this predicament because we're gonna be upside down. If any other departments goes upside down, we can't rob Peter to pay Paul with this thing. So not knowing what PD's gonna do, not knowing what the street department's gonna do. So we're going quickly in February, in March, so...
And Mr. Mayor, if I may not speak out of turn.
Go ahead.
If I could just make a comment on to Mayor and Council, whether it's Finance, but already after two weeks in meeting with the different departments and Finance, I guess my direction coming forward is to ensure that the viability of financials for this city is continuing to remain strong steadfast. I think that if...
If I might add, I'm gonna interrupt you. The one thing I have learned, watching as a mayor and not the City Manager, that there's been a lot of continuity lost between all department heads and business, and the, and the Finance Department. And Finance Department will tell you really quick by looking at numbers. I always did that, and I highly recommend, and I know you would.
Yes, sir.
To keep us on task and work closely with that lady right there, we'll not have it. If Steve had gone to Lisa in January like we would have used to have, we would've said, dang, we need to get this poor council on to do it. We don't have his budget. We gotta find a pavilion somewhere that we can do away with. And that was not done. Looking at it in March, and at the same time at engine, is, is a good learning curve that we can get back on track with. But this, this is gonna be awfully embarrassing if we have three, four more of these hit us. And we can say, fund balance, all we want, that money we don't have. That's money that we've gotta pay for water treatment facility and wastewater and all the cars and the fire departments, the laborers and the insurance, and all the things we gotta have. We've gotta stay on this thing that we grew up last fall, which we put some serious time into. So with that, would entertain a motion to recognize this eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars as spent money that we've got to come up with and promise to not do this again without plenty of oversight and transparency would be the good word. Give me a motion for Mr. Roper, bless him, go forward. Glad we have it, but we gotta figure out a way to pay for it.
Make a motion, we move forward with the eighteen one twenty in that if we do have unbalanced left over from the two items we previously motioned on.
We're gonna start trying to find eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars somewhere. And it might not be in the fire department, but it's gonna be in some department in the general fund that's gonna give it up.
I have a section in my budget that is for computers and computer repairs and things. I can take that money.
What my skin, you, I promise.
I can take that money, I can, I can make it. I can take that money, I can make it work.
Put a few other departments second hand because you're already going to be, you're not going to get back in this line if that engine is blown.
If the engine is blown, I might struggle, but I'll get close.
Too bad we're not doing your roof this year.
We did that last year.
I'm doing this.
Okay, so I got a motion, can I get a second to recognize this eighteen thousand one hundred twenty expenditure?
Second.
Got a motion, a second discussion. Based on how you're going to write that up, but it needs to be recognized as part of our expenditure. Motion, second discussion, any other discussion? Been off everyone, show hands. Thank you, it's unanimous, thank you Steve, thank you.
And I apologize, I apologize again for bringing this on.
Well, thank you. Well, it would have been nice if you went a little thing in the county, but that sometime will get by us. And a new bid is continued. Steve, you're still up.
Purchase of a Tahoe for the fire department, which is for me to drive. I had budgeted thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Day Chevrolet at Jasper's price came in at thirty-nine, two forty-three. Harley Chevrolet at Dallas was thirty-six, three ninety-five. Here again, met with city manager, discussed ordering time. The spring deadline cut off last week as far as ordering. The next order date available is October first. You're looking at a seven-month bill time, which puts it delivery mid-September. I believe the actual date was the sixteenth through the twentieth, if everything were on schedule and on time. Talked to city manager about it, he said go ahead with the project because it was budgeted. And I have. I ordered that Tahoe from Harley Chevrolet at Dallas for thirty-six, three ninety-five.
Is it mandated that we accept it at the time? But it's something of, usually we'd never do this until the following year anyway. It comes September, our budget looks worse than it does today, if it could. Of course, we're not going to be hit, but we got to start making money back in the next year with this expenditure. And tell the council why the cheaper police needs a vehicle than that.
Current Tahoe that I'm driving is twelve years old. Got a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it, a hundred and sixty-eight or something. Last year alone, I spent probably ten thousand dollars in maintenance on it. Completely had to rebuild the front end completely, had to have a new rear end. The only thing that's not new on it anymore is the engine.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that was a hand down, that used to be the mayor's.
Correct. I got that one from the mayor when the city bought him a newer one.
A newer one, a newer one?
It's finished two rounds of seven miles, hundred and, got it at a hundred and eighty, a hundred and sixty-eight sometimes.
Just, we still have until September for it to deliver. So we're all tearing apart. Of course, we'll all have to spend so much money this year on it, so this financing we're very good at. And I guess, we'll see, do we need to approve that, it had been on the budget? With expenditures we've had today, we want to bless this, the council tonight? I have a request, can we go ahead and approve this, knowing the long lead time? Got a motion to approve the purchase of the new Tahoe, thirty-six thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars, financed over a, finish my request a little bit. Financed over how many years, five?
I think only five, it's a three.
Three years, okay. Over a three-year period? Now, John, so we got a motion, second, got a motion, a second discussion? Being off everyone, show hands. Thank you, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
I do thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Adam Jett, roll-off vehicle repair, wastewater pollution control plant.
Mayor, I should have, the council, I should have the estimates for the two thousand macrolog truck repair. Do you want me to read the parts? Please, please. Remove and replace the rear differential, replace the hood units, crank the housing, remove roll-off carriers for access, fill with oil. Parts included differential assembly, damaged Ford car, five gallons of synthetic gear oil from hood units. We received two bids, one from Werny's Truck Supply Equipment, truck equipment, sixty-four hundred, sixty-six dollars and forty-six cents. And one from Coke Equipment at seventy-four hundred dollars. And I'd like to ask council to go with the little bid for the macrolog truck.
Motion?
Make a motion, we accept a little bid of six thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents.
Note that this is coming out of a ton of different departments coming out of the wastewater funds. Is second?
Second.
Got a motion, second discussion? Been off...
You have used one of them before, we said the other night in the meeting, you said you've used them very heavily.
Very, yeah, we've used them a lot of times, yes, sir.
Just wanted to make the review second.
Yeah, if he's all golden, he's always been the same guy.
He's done a lot of lower-profile jobs in that.
Yeah, regular man, yeah.
Any other discussion? Been off everyone, show hands, unanimous. Wet well pump repair, replace wastewater pollution control plant.
Ten horsepower small diesel pump motor, four hundred and sixty volt, three phase, seventeen fifty RPM, forty-nine with forty-nine feet of cable included with it. Our first bid is from James Electric at ninety-eight hundred. Which like I said, that included the part, because James Electric's was a different type motor. Because the motor's actually in there is an exhaust pump that's flying. And that's the reason the James Electric would be cheaper if it wasn't for the part that it had to have to bolt to the bottom. It's an actual extra piece that is required on the, so that's why the exhaust pump is actually cheaper. And that is the new one. Ten horsepower motor for it. And I don't ever remember in my time there, and looking through the records, that they would be replaced. So we're probably talking eighties.
Eighty-two, I think eighty-three, something like that. You'd actually dedicate eighty-five. But anyway, we're going to have a motion to replace, you said James was lost?
No, it's out.
Okay.
Fly.
Okay, fly, okay.
Nine five hundred and...
Three thousand, three hundred dollars less, nine five hundred.
Yes.
Okay, you have a motion to approve the little bid, or...
I'm going to approve the nine thousand five hundred eighty-three and ninety-two cents for fly.
Is second, got a motion, second discussion? Been off everyone, show hands, thank you council. Item A, water tank repaint request to bid AW Lawson Boulevard Tank versus Pioneer Industrial Boulevard. Ms. Hall?
We have talked about painting the Pioneer Industrial, which is what y'all actually have. Budget can be put on the budget, but I'd like for y'all to consider painting the AW Lawson Boulevard Tank instead because of its proximity to five fifteen. And they're both basically in the same shape, I mean, I think like that one's worse than the other. And with the two new tanks on five fifteen, I'd hate for this one to look like a rusty can.
Well, of course, you get to look at this one Kurt Rapp through. So David basically wants to do a change even though the one on five fifteen is a little higher maybe? A little larger, it's five hundred thousand versus two fifty?
It's actually about the same height, it's about a hundred feet.
So you think it's going to come in around, although we budgeted approximately a hundred thousand?
Chris did, he was a city engineer.
Okay.
He's got, what I was, if y'all consider the change in the tanks, I guess I need to ask that first.
Well, water tank, it was in the budget.
The Pioneer was.
So you want to change it because it would make the city look a little more prepared with five fifteen versus industrial?
Yeah, yeah, with the other two being used up with earth, I think it was.
It started chalk pretty bad.
Yes.
So basically David's asking for a motion to transfer the funds from the tank at the industrial park, you know, off of Jeanette and Westwood Drive, I guess, would be to transfer that to the tank at the...
AW Lawson Boulevard.
AW Lawson Boulevard.
One of the houses.
One across from Jasper G.
Yes.
Entertainer motion?
Make a motion, we switch from Pioneer Industrial Boulevard Tank to the AW Lawson Tank for repainting.
Okay. Second, got a motion, second discussion, out of order, will... The industrial park will probably be on the agenda next year, right? So we got to get it painted as well.
Yes.
And probably one or two more.
Yes.
So, any other discussion?
I will say visiting other cities really quickly. Our water tanks are something to be proud of.
Remember the day when the power went out and we were out of water in about an hour and a half, wasn't it? Any other discussion? Been off everyone, show hands. Thank you. Did you have something else, Dave?
Yes, on the same topic, to allow transit engineers to do the...
Bid process?
Yes.
Let's make that part of the, Kurt, you made a motion, didn't you? Add to that if we can go back, just Kurt, being our engineer, usually we don't much think about it, but the engineer's got to be bid out and have specs. And our city engineer who oversaw all of those, David is asking for being a turnip seed to oversee that. So let's get a motion on that.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Seventy-five hundred dollars, better get a motion on that.
Make a motion, seventy-five hundred dollars for turnip seed and then to review and oversee this process.
And they'll open the bids for us.
Yes.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion, second discussion? Been off everyone, show hands, that's unanimous? Anything else, David, at this point? We ran out of main water supply.
No, it's all on the budget.
Nah, that's good. Okay, item A, discussion two thousand nineteen pavement, consider city staff to work jointly with county staff on the road owned in a park by both of us, Lonnie.
Yes, mayor, council, I'm not asking for no money.
Thank you.
Yes, he is.
But for the past five years, we've been resurfacing city streets. We've been working in conjunction with the county to lighten the mobility of different paving crews. And I'm here to ask you to, for permission to move forward, negotiate with the county and try to make this happen and finish our resurfacing of all streets this year.
That'll complete all of them.
Yes.
I make a motion. Wait, 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 just, let me clear something up. We talked about this at the workshop the other evening, but Brandon and you as well, will, to clarify what Ann's about to make this motion, is that you will work with the county when there's so many feet of a county road that's attached to a city street that we will measure it, we will determine the estimated costs. In some cases, the county will take what, will reimburse them, or we will reimburse them in a light and kind of another project. And the city manager and Lonnie will determine this and report this back to council, that's what we did. And I'm saying this because I told Brandon the other day. Don't want to cheat the county out of anything, but we definitely don't want to be chitty. We want to trade apples for apples and oranges for oranges and so many square feet or so many pounds of asphalt while we're trying to accomplish. Basically Lonnie's asking in this motion is for them to have permission administratively to oversee this and come back and report it to council, am I correct? Can I get a motion with that?
So much.
Got a motion. Can you write that down pretty much, because I want to see that again as we can move forward? Is second, got a motion, a second discussion? Couldn't say it any better, couldn't you Lonnie? Off everyone, show hands. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Man, I wish I let you say it, Dan. Item A, consider first reading plan and zoning commission ordinance, Brandon Douglas.
Yes, sir, mayor and council, you may recall this past Thursday, I took the liberty to present you all with an idea to update the Jasper Big Boil processes under Division Three, Section Two, Three and Two, there was a creation thereof of the planning zoning. I kind of presented an idea of sorts to add some clarity in terms of membership. Albeit, I will take responsibility for not coordinating with legal and clerk and mayor in terms of formatting and information sharing. I actually composed it Wednesday evening in preparation of the Thursday meeting. However, Mr. Mayor, I did consult with legal in terms of ideas, in terms of wanting to make sure that we have some consistency with the other boards under that particular section. Would like to get used to the formatting, not to put anything off, but just want to make sure I do it the Jasper way. So with that, I wanted to just...
Well, I mentioned to Brandon today, it was often quick changing a ordinance without a lot of discussion. It was mentioned at the council meeting, a planning meeting Thursday night, next thing we know we're having first reading on it.
Yes, and that is something that I did want to just throw out as a disclaimer that perhaps a little overzealous on my part, but I did kind of create the expectation of just working through it. So I'm going to sit before you here just to say that at the staff level, I did vet it through with some institutional knowledge of Mr. Underwood in terms of what some best practices or composition of the board and other measures that I can go into more detail if needed. It's pretty simplified in terms of the structure. It's not as comprehensive as some of the other reports. So if that needs to be looked at to add some more layers per section, I'm receptive to work with the mayor, council, clerk, legal to ensure it's done properly.
Okay, I would appreciate that, and I think the council would. Some council might want to move forward with it, but I think it'd be a good idea that the council that wants to move forward with it, meet with myself, you, Mr. Pickett, or Mr. Pickett, make it with us. And I want to totally understand how it relates to our charter and how it relates to the necessity that we add personnel or add people to the boards and how it would make us more efficient. I want to hear that presented to the public when we read this, and I think we all need to be on board with that. That's why I'm asking you to table this, if you will, until next month. We'll have a month to look at it because the world's not going to burn down between now and then.
Mr. Mayor, you understand that we don't have any ordinance in place that dictates who will be on our planning and zoning commission?
Well, that's why we want to meet and discuss it.
Well, it's been that way for quite some time.
Well, it's not hurt anything, has it?
It most certainly has.
No, it's not.
Well, it has, this year we've had to send several things back to the planning and zoning commission. We've had troubles, we have, we had to send it back to, because they didn't appropriately... And I'm not pointing the finger at the people, they don't necessarily understand what their duties are as well. So I think it's something that, I can give you the information on the charter.
Well, I did what we'll do. I will put Sonny Proctor on our committee, and you and I and Brandon will meet and we'll ask this out and bring something to the council.
So our charter clearly says that the...
I'll also have the city attorney, this is why.
That's fine, the city council shall create by ordinance such boards, commission, and authorities. And it specifically goes into what those expectations are as to makeup, duties, responsibility, leadership. And for our planning and zoning commission, we do not have any of those ordinances.
Mr. Pickett, those orders have been in place since they were written in nineteen eighty-two?
Can I ask our clerk, I reached out to her a month or so ago and she informed me that she couldn't find those.
I think what we'll do, we'll set a meeting and we'll discuss and bring it back to this council while we intend to pass next month. But start having to read it tonight, I think that would be a little jump over zealous as well.
Lisa, have you been able to find the ordinances that I asked you to find?
No.
Okay, all right.
Did you ask Mr. Pickett?
He was copying on the emails.
Well, I would entertain the motion, if you would, to say that we'll table this the next month and we'll sit down, discuss it, and we'll come with something that we all agree upon.
I think it's important that we do this quickly so that we can move forward.
I think it's important that we do it properly.
As do I, always.
So I do as well. And so we'll sit together this month, come back to the council with something that we all agree upon, instead of having something thrown out at a workshop and then voted on. Pickett has not had a chance to look at it, we need to discuss this so it won't end up in another lawsuit.
Well, the issue's been simmering since our organizational meeting in January.
I don't see how that affects that whatsoever.
Well, we're down to a two-member boarding commission and... Well, we're down to a two-member boarding commission and, and we're not able to take the action while we don't have appropriate numbers.
We could very easily vote on two to one tonight, if you had wanted to, and you decided not to vote on anyone.
No, I didn't decide, council did.
Uh, I know you did.
As well as your support, until you realized you had voted on the.
I didn't realize, I just looked this open door.
Right.
And I think the county, I told Brandon this evening, we need to discuss this, and so that we present this to the public as a group, instead of just one or two people who think they're on board with it, so I'd like, I like to catch up on it.
Can we, can we give some sort of approximate time by which we can have these ordinances in place?
Uh, I'd say probably April meeting.
April meeting.
We, we should, we should be able to?
Yes, sir.
Have a meeting, Mr. Pickett, could you make the meeting with us? And I want, I want to review what Brandon brings to it, and then why we decide to go with five, and what we're going to add to our existing orders.
I make a motion that we table this and?
And a motion to take.
Committee to meet with the expectation to have a final reading if agreed upon in our April meeting.
Sounds fair, need a second?
Thank you.
Got a motion second discussion? Bid not offer over Shaw hand? Two minutes, thank you Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome to the council.
A pleasure, thank you.
Okay, item O, reduce water sewer rates application?
Council, we have one application. For this, this plan. She makes the, she, any new requirements?
You said you've already located, does not have the requirements?
They're both over sixty-two.
Question, Mr. Mayor? If you recall, months ago, we had a meeting, there was an applicant whose address, information on ID versus application didn't line up. Did, I was asking about a process then, do we have a process to verify now?
Well, we had, they had already verified it, they had just moved in.
Okay.
Again, for people who don't know, this is the city's effort to help those disadvantaged that have water and sewer with the city of Jasper, and it's our effort to try to assist those disadvantaged in a small way.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the reduce water sewer rate application.
Motion approved. Second, got a motion second discussion? Bid not offer over Shaw hand? Thank you. Resolution for supplemental lease truck, uh, police department, Lisa? Explain what you're doing, please.
Council, couple months ago, we ordered a, a vehicle for the police department, it's a truck, and we're financing it, I just had that paperwork this morning. Um, required is a, an or, a resolution for, for this lease, uh, in order to finance it through GMA. And if it's okay, I'll read it, and we can vote to approve it. Resolution, a resolution of ordinance to authorize and direct an officer of the city to execute one or more lease supplements for a lease for leases under the GMA direct leasing program. Today could make such leases as qualified tax exempt obligations to provide an effective date and for other purposes. Whereas the city has entered into a master lease, the master lease stated as of July second, two thousand two, with Georgia Municipal Association Incorporated for the leasing from time to time of certain equipment, machinery or other personal properties pursuant to supplemental leases. Now therefore, be it resolved or ordained as followed by, as follows by the governing body of the city. Number one, the mayor or city manager of the city is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver a lease supplement pursuant to the master lease to put into effect one or more leases for the two thousand nineteen Ford F-150 and equipment, the leased property. Said officer of the city is authorized and directed in the name and on behalf of the city to execute and deliver one, one or more lease supplements for items of the leased property and substantially the form attached to the master lease. With such changes and additions, this may be approved by said officer. And two, such other documents, this may be deemed by such officer to be necessary or desirable to effect the purposes hereof of the master lease, and such execution shall constitute conclusive evidence that the executed document has been authorized and approved hereby. The after said officer is further authorized to do all things necessary or appropriate to effectuate the purposes hereof. Number two, an appropriation in the city's current operating budget has been previously made, which shall be sufficient to pay the rentals and the termination payment during the starting term under such lease supplements. Number three, the lease or leases contemplated by the said lease supplements are hereby designated qualified tax exempt obligations within the meaning of section two sixty-five B three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended, and said officer shall be authorized to confirm such designation by execution of appropriate documents in connection therewith. The authorization shall be effective immediately.
Questions, councilman? Basically, how much did the truck cost?
I'm trying to pull that up, it's, uh, thirty-nine thousand fifty-two dollars, and we financed it over three years.
Didn't we pay cash for it?
Yeah, we've already paid.
Basically what we're doing, we want our money back, um, GMA said we're?
I had budgeted to finance it.
Right, instead of paying cash for it, so this is what we're doing tonight. Entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement, to be signed by city manager or myself?
Make a motion for the immediate signing and execution of the resolution for supplemental lease on the police vehicle.
Second?
Second.
Motion second discussion? Bid not offer over Shaw hand, thank you council. Finally, mayor's report, finance, Lisa?
Council, in your packet, your book, you should have the financial report for February nineteenth. Uh, in the general fund, we collected, uh, local office and sales tax money, a hundred and ten thousand fifty-four compared to a hundred and four thousand last year. We did receive our Georgia Power franchise check, um, two hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars, about eighteen thousand more than last year.
Two eighty-six?
Uh-huh, we, we got two sixty-eight last year. Uh, and the squashed account. We are, we have a million, one hundred sixteen thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars at this time. Collected ninety-five thousand one hundred nineteen dollars past month. Water fund. We're, it's, it's a little deceiving, I, it's over thirteen percent of our annual revenues, but I, I know all the league check and bills haven't been posted yet, so we're probably closer to budget layer. And I, I meant to tell you this, back in January, that, um, we, we did pay off, um, Gary Coles for the Coles property in January, so we own, own that, the contact we had with him. That's all I had.
Questions, council? Thank you, Lisa. Item B, roads and other reports, Lonnie?
Okay, Mayor Council, I lay the report up, uh, for you to look at, this is the leak detection that has been going around checking our services and, uh, water lines, they found a total of fourteen leaks. Some of them have been very, very small, they had found a larger leak down here on Samaritan Drive going into the thrift store. So, you know, they are finding some, but, uh, as a general rule, if you average out everything, you found it's about three gallon a minute over the whole system, so, uh, we've been working on it last year and correcting a lot of things really well. As far as the mass arms for the traffic, people have saw work going on at community banks. They're just boring the roads and everything, getting ready for the electrical wiring to go in. It looks like the, I looked today, the time element to get the mass arms delivered to the company looks like about a middle of April, it had a twenty-two week time limit.
You, you tell me that they're finishing up in Blue Ridge in Elgin?
Yes, yes, those counties, when they move in here to actually do the work, they'll be finished, and they'll, weather permitting, they'll get everything done.
But they had standard aluminum pole?
Yes, yes, and they didn't have a lot of intersections, I mean, a big intersections. So, uh, they had this much simpler job.
Did they get two or one?
Uh, I think Immer County got two, uh, Pickett's got two, and Fannie got one, I think, that's the way it was. We've had lots of questions about the brush and debris on the side of five fifteen. We found out today from a DOT rev that the DOT was in within two weeks of, uh, giving a notice of intent for the, a new company to come in and remove that. So probably in the next two to three weeks, something like that, you'll see some work.
Wait a couple more years and it'll rot, I think.
Right. I got a call from Dale Marcy about the Shamrock Street on Main Street. They have requested instead of us putting the tent, or the stage, excuse me, the stage at the green space there, they'd like to have it sitting in front of the, uh, Keith Pickett's beautiful building. So, uh, they're, they're wanting to move that and have it more centrally located right in front of sixty-one Main. It's time for city employees to certify their, uh, salt and water conservation. Uh, we're working on a, a tiny bit of you and, uh, a train to get that done. And that's about it.
Questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C. Police report?
Good evening, Mayor Council. The month of February, the Jasper Police Department responded to six hundred and seventy-five calls from the nine-one-one center, responded to thirty-eight motor vehicle accidents, issued a total of eighty-five citations for following, fifty-six speeding, three sneak belt, two shoplifting, one unlawful use of wireless device, twenty-one miscellaneous citations. George State Patrol issued a total of thirty-three for grand total in city court, one hundred twenty-eight. Six state warrants for taking, uh, three counts of非法 taking, one count of submided family violence on private children in second degree. One misdemeanor shoplifting. Miscellaneous call responding to, thirty-one alarms, seven, uh, just, uh, seven trespassing or loitering, eight, eighteen disorderly, twenty-five suspicious activities, six harassment, twelve domestic disputes and investigated, zero burglaries.
Questions, council?
At this time, I'd like to, uh, remember the pursuit we talked about, uh, last council meeting, at this time, I'd like to have Officer, Nathan Henderson come forward, please. Officer Henderson, I've been with the Jasper Police Department for about a year and a half, one month, I mean, one year, three months, he's currently the sheriff's officer, I believe, nine or ten years, is that correct?
Nine years, yes.
On the, uh, night, I'll, I'll first give you what this corporal who wrote this, uh, this recommendation, who was the primary pursuit unit, uh, was, uh, Corporal Watson, he's back there as well. Said I wanted to let you know on the night, uh, Sunday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, quarter to ten, thirty PM during a high speed pursuit, which began Officer Watson, lead car traveling down five fifteen into Cherokee County. Officer Nathan Henderson was out of guard for his own life and protection of the citizens of two counties, went head on with the suspect from the pursuit, which is now driving the wrong way on the one-way. Pursuit had to be ended and due to his courage and actions to stop the suspect. Officer Nathan Henderson risked his own life while saving countless others that night to stop the suspect. And my recommendation, Officer Nathan, be presented with an award. I'm here tonight, uh, valor is described in the dictionary, he has great courage in the face of danger. Nathan happened to been there, as we once again said, a wrong way driving on interstate, there could have been somebody seriously injured or most likely resulted in death. So I'm pleased tonight to recognize Officer Henderson, Nathan Henderson, with a certificate of valor and also a medal of valor to be worn with the City of Jasper Police uniform, that's right above there, so congratulations.
Sir?
Did the council get a picture of Henderson?
Sure. Item D? Chief Trooper?
Thank you, Mayor Council, again. Fourth month of February, the city fire department responded to a hundred and six calls, those were no structure fires inside the city, one outside, no vehicle fires in or out, no garage or brush fires in or out. Ten motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city, two outside. Thirty-eight emergency medical responses in, thirty out, fifteen other calls in, ten outside. Majority of those fifteen were storm related, storm that went through a couple weeks ago. Seven power out down, all kinds of events. Total of them in the February is a typo, and I apologize for that, that number's not correct, I just noticed. Fire inspection looked at five sets of plans for structural renovations and left them eighteen years late.
Questions, council? Thank you, chief. John, you think JYS?
Baseball's probably left.
We have no other business coming with this council, we've had a motion to adjourn.